Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call and declaration of quorum.
Dr. Matusy.
Here.
Mr. Lao.
Present.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Tillman.
Here. Okay, I'd like to welcome all our visitors. Thank you for attending this evening. We had no one sign the public comments on the agenda items, and no one contacted me or Mr. Sternberger prior to the meeting. Agenda item 2.3, Presentation by Angel Johnson and Blasingame. Evan has joined us this evening to tell us everything we've done wrong.
No, that's not why I come here. You guys did a good job up here. We'll pack this out. You all. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your time this evening. I'm not going to go through all 42 pages of the audit report unless you just absolutely want me to, then we can do it. But I don't think that that is in anybody's best interest. What I've passed out to you there, first of all, my name's Evan Blasingame. I believe Steve normally comes out here to visit with you all. He is in Piedmont in Crooked Oak tonight, and so I'm filling in. I was part of the team out here for your audit this past school year. And so what I've passed out to you, I've passed out your full copy of your audit report that will be issued to the State Department of Education. And then inside there is a little stapled piece of paper, four or five pages there that go over a little bit about what our responsibilities are as your auditor, what your responsibilities are as the auditee. And so I'll go over a little bit of that with you, then we'll go over some financial information. And then there were a couple of findings of some things that we did come across as we're doing our testing this year. So as your auditor, our responsibility isn't to come out here and catch the bad guys, figure out who's stealing. We do a financial statement audit. And so our responsibility and what we've been engaged to do is to give you an opinion on your financial statements here at Hennessy. We take a look at your financial statements. We do some tests on those based on our professional judgment, take a look at POs and invoices while we're out here, look at bank statements, checks, deposits, some of those types of things. And so we, all of that to give you an opinion on your financial statements. We only give you reasonable assurance. We can't give you absolutely 100% assurance that there are no mistakes in your financial statements because we don't look at everything while we're out here. Again, we just do a judgment, a sample of things. Our opinion, after all the tests, the things that we've looked at, we've given you a good opinion on your financial statements. They're presented there in your audit report. I feel like if anybody in the general public were to look at your financial statements, they'd have a good idea of what the financial position is here at Hennessy Public Schools. And so we've given you a good opinion on that. Some of you all's responsibilities as the auditee, these are your financial statements. You know, these are not the financial statements that I made up for you all. They are the ones that you all presented to me to take a look at. You all responsible for giving me the time to come out here and do our tests, access to the invoices and deposits and bank statements and anything else that I may need to. Never have any issue with that out here. Everybody's always very welcoming, very open, very helpful in answering any questions we may have. So always, always a pleasure to come out here and work with you all. There are some, a little bit of financial information. If you'll flip forward, two or three pages there, comparing year '20 to fiscal year end '21. Looking at the general fund there, you can see fund balances for the building fund, general fund, child nutrition fund, co-op fund. Decreased there in the general fund. Building fund is up. Small change there in the child nutrition fund, same as with the co-op fund. Down below there, a little bit more as far as comparing some revenues. Local sources here in your district were up $190,000. Most of that is just some valuations being up. Add the lower taxes, collections were up here at Hennessy. And then you had an estate that left some donations to your district as well in '21. County sources, not changed too much there. County four mil tax was down and some mortgage tax was up. County four mil was up, or sorry, down $14,000. Mortgage tax was up about $9,000. So netted, down $5,400. State sources, a big difference there. Your state sources of revenue, down $1.3 million there. A large majority of that was gross production tax. Apologies. $1.2 million less collected in '21 than in '20. Your state aid was also down about $118,000. Motor vehicle up a little bit, $18,000, mainly your gross production tax collections down there in '21. Expenditures in the general fund, down $240,000. Bought some scoreboards, bought a scoreboard in the prior year, Chromebooks in the prior year, technology, COVID year in 2020, updating a lot of technology with those Chromebooks. Some of those were not repeated this year in '21. I believe I missed your federal revenues up top there, the general fund. A big jump in those federal revenues, up $973,000. Again, the majority of that is the COVID money that the federal government set out. COVID money was up, you got about $800,000 in COVID money. Special ed money was up as well. A large majority of that though, due to the federal funds, due to COVID. Building fund, revenues down a little bit, mainly because you had a FEMA grant in the prior year, and that was not received again in 2021. Everything else was about the same there, revenue wise in your building fund. Expenditures down quite a bit. Parking lot in the prior year, grading, the prior year had a grade work construction for parking lots. A large expenditure there with some capital expenses was not seen again in fiscal year '21. Child nutrition, not a whole lot of change there in your revenues. All the children went to being able to eat free in '21 due to COVID. The federal government paid for all those lunches. So your local collections were down since Matt paid for them. Your federal collection is up just a little bit. Seeing a net of $3,600 in revenues. Not much of a change there. Revenues, or sorry, expenditures were down $92,000. Prior year, you had a larger freezer repair that you had to pay for, redid some flooring in the elementary cafeteria. So some repairs remained there in fiscal year '20 that you did not duplicate in '21. Any questions on any of this that I can answer for you all? If you'll flip over to the next page there, there were a couple of findings, nothing too major. We do look at some of your fundraisers, things like that while we're out here. And we selected a baseball fundraiser. I believe it was, I believe it was a golf fundraiser, if I remember right. And it was by donation. People just donated money in order to play golf. But in looking at this fundraiser, as we were trying to tie out the deposits, seeing what hit the bank and what was recorded in your accounting system, we noticed that the receipts were not being given out to the individuals who were donating. When we got the receipt book, copy where it's got two or three copies there, you know, the copy goes to the person who's donating. All those copies were still there. So those receipts were not being given out to the people who donated. We like to see, anytime anybody's given some money, donation, a receipt's being handed out. That way, when Mr. Smith donates $50, he gets a receipt for $50 instead of an individual writing down $40. And so we can get an accurate count of the money collected. Just make sure, I know Mr. Sternberger has already taken care of that and gone over that. Just make sure all those fundraisers, the receipts are being handed out. The second one there, this is just a small error. When we were looking at the minutes, state statute has, requires the board to approve all POs. You do that every, every meeting here. You approve general fund POs, 1345, or whatever the case might be. When we were looking at the bond fund purchase orders, there was purchase orders number three and number four that were paid on, but there wasn't any documentation in the minutes that those were actually approved. We went back and looked, and it was just an error not putting those in there. However, that was, we couldn't verify that those POs were actually approved by you as a school board. State statute again, requires that those encumbrances must be approved by the school, by the school board.
Did it just go to the next month?
No, they just, it was, there was just a skip there. I don't know how far that went.
Maybe it was last year and it just got missed.
They just, they just didn't get on there. A big major there, a little bit of a receiving error in the fundraisers and just not getting the purchase orders on the minutes there. But other than that, everything else seemed to be fine. Timberly and Ginger do a great job out here. And like I said, they're always very helpful in getting any information to us. Everything seems to always be very well organized, handed over to us. And so our time out here is always enjoyable working with them.
Have you ever issued one of these audits to any school district where you didn't mention that some receipts for some fundraising organization were not properly accounted?
We do, but it is pretty.
Really? Because we've never received one.
Yeah.
You just scratch FFA and put baseball, or scratch baseball and.
Schools have maybe like three activities.
Yeah, FFA.
Before we sat down.
You're right. FFA does get picked on, but that's, they're an easy target sometimes. No FFA this year, baseball. Are there any other questions that I can answer to you all? Listen, I appreciate your time. Mr. Sternberger, how's our contact information? If there's anything that comes up throughout the school year, our office is available to you all as well for questions, anything that may, may come up. So always feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to assist you in any ways that I can. Thank you. You're not going out.
Where are you going from?
I'm going back home to Chicken Shack. You are my one stop tonight. Enjoy your evening.
Agenda item three, consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull out of the consent agenda for discussion?
I do not.
Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Dr. Matusy.
Yes.
Mr. Lao.
Hi.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Agenda item 4.1, Discussion with Autry Technology Center Regarding Partnership Opportunities.
So Mr. Hughes is new to Autry Tech, and so I've had a chance to sit down with him this, within the summer, catch up to speed in kind of the history of what Hennessy's going through, visiting with both Chisholm Trail and Autry. And so I've obviously had Chisholm Trail down here last month, and invited him to come in this month, and he brought with him, and he may vary. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Hughes.
Okay. First off, thank you guys for having us. I appreciate the invitation. I'll read the paper later.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
No problem. All right, thank you, sir.
You don't get one.
I don't get one.
I'm a parent.
First off, a little bit about me, just quickly. Raised in Freedom, Oklahoma. So I've always been a Northwest Oklahoma guy. Went to school at Oklahoma State, graduated a master's, and a master's of masters. Worked at Meridian Tech in Stillwater for six years, and then got a chance to go back out. My family farms and ranches is right around the Alba Caverns. Still got a family farm there that my dad and brother set up full time. I used to get the calls, here's when you need to take vacation, we're boot's ready, we got cattle works. But anyway, that's kind of my background. Went from Meridian, back to the farm, worked at Northwest Tech as assistant superintendent in out at the Alba campus. Had a chance to go to High Plains and Woodward, was superintendent there for 13 years. Then got a chance to come to Autry. My kid, my last one, at Woodward High is a senior, and most of them were headed to Oklahoma State. So mama felt like that was a little closer to get closer to kids. I told her she couldn't live in the same town as the kids were going to college, but at least Enid was closer, so she was excited to make that move. First off, thank you guys, seriously, for the opportunity. I think it's phenomenal you're at least looking at it. Because to me, I'm not down here to give you the comparisons of why Autry's better than Chisholm Trail. I just think it's great you're looking at joining the district. I think it's a shame that Hennessy hadn't had that opportunity in the past. You guys are called what we call white space, and you're not in any, any district. So just that you guys are considering it, I think is huge. We'd love to have students. Our high school enrollment is growing. We have 25 programs, and I think through that, there's a folder in there that goes into details on which programs we have. We have 25 full-time programs that your students would be a part of. A lot of this will be similar to Chisholm Trail's deal. And we offer a 13th and 14th year scholarship. So somebody graduates, if you guys are in our district, and somebody graduates from Hennessy, for whatever reason, sports, whatever, they can't get to the tech center or all their high school, they still have that 13th and 14th year to come, pre-tuition if they want to. And I'm pretty sure that's, that's been standard at every school I've been at. And so that's something Autry offers. Our corporate training area is a phenomenal group of guys and gals that offer basically every safety program you could think of. We do the leadership training. We do that for a lot of companies. And really, when you look at, we're about 750 students on our full-time program side. We're about 18,000 students with what we cover on our business and industry side. And when you take that number and you compare it to, say Stillwater, like there's 27,000 students at Oklahoma State, that's a pretty big number. And so proud of that group. They're one of the top in the state as far as business and industry training, and do a phenomenal job. Mandy, and then Jesse is, Jesse works at the school too, and we're excited to have him. Jesse's role, along with the corporate training piece, is our liaison with the base. We do a lot of work with Vance Air Force Base, and Jesse's our point of contact there. Is at the base just about three or four times a week, it seems like, sometimes every day. But he's a great resource to have that connection with the base and things that we can do with them. And I feel like Vance Air Force's base is a great resource for all of us in this area. So we try to support them all we can. We feel like that Autry is our district, so not just Enid. My roots, like I say, rule. So that was why I wanted to come to Autry with the opportunity. I wanted to stay in Northwest Oklahoma. I love the people in Northwest Oklahoma. Feel like I can relate. When you guys walked in, boots and jeans, I told Mandy, I was going to wear my boots and jeans, and I thought, well, I better put a coat on. But I really feel more comfortable dressed like you guys. So, but what I would like to do is just open it up for questions that you guys might have. What do you guys want? What does Hennessy want from basically Career Tech? I think that's the biggest question I have. And to me, then you've got some decisions to make, which direction you want to go. And I would be happy to answer any questions I can. If they're real hard, I'm going to have Mandy answer those. If they're real hard, I have Jesse here. So, but.
Well, Mandy, you've been doing this for a while, because I believe this is at least the third, if not fourth, time that you've been sitting in these chairs for the presentation for Autry Tech for us. How many schools in 30 to 45 mile radius of Autry Tech are not members like us?
Medford is one I can think of. Pond Creek's an interesting one. Hunter's in the district, but Pond Creek is not. So that's kind of a split deal.
But basically.
Yeah. Basically, Medford.
Medford, Pond Creek.
And then the Timberlake bunch. So you've got Jet, Nash, Halle and Goultrie, they're all white space too. They're not in anybody's district.
One of the concerns that some people have brought to me, I'd like you to address, that it's a considerable amount of money that we ask the taxpayers to allocate forever in perpetuity, you know, when you join a career tech. But one, with that kind of outlay, there's a concern that there's many of your programs, you mentioned 25 different programs, there's many that you don't have admissions. So if we're going to ask our community to fork over their tax dollars to send, you know, anywhere from one to two to three dozen students over there as in addition to post-graduates, 13th, 14th year, as you said, why, why would we do that if we can't get into your classes?
I don't know that, in fact, like I said, the high school piece, yes, to answer the question, there's a lot of our programs are full, which I think is phenomenal. High school students have first priority. So we may be full, but it might be that high school filled up to a certain point, and then we fill the rest of that to completely full with adults. So the high school group, we have a pecking order, and the high school gets first shot. So not very often does a high school student not get in. Now, they might not get their first choice, but there's not very many high school students that we turn away if they meet the requirements. You know, if they've done, you know, if they've got good attendance, some of those things that we're looking at, make sure they're going to be, you know, because that's what we get just on, can we produce a good person for the workforce? So very seldom do the high school students not get in. Now, if they don't come as a high school student, and they come back to the adult, then that may be a little bit if-er to get in. But it's a great question.
If the free tuition's only available for 13th, 14th year, and you're wanting to get in too, and I'm just going to grab nursing, and I'm not, and I can't get in the year after I graduate, and I can't get in two years after I graduate, and now it's three years after, and you haven't allowed me in, yet we've been paying the taxes for our community to be able to do that. Do you offer a 15th and 16th year to get that person in, or, you know, they age out at the age of 20 and they don't get to come?
Age out, but then we look at scholarships, because we do have a foundation. So if somebody gets to that point, and they tried several years, and they didn't get in, if there's not a really good reason why they're not getting in, it's just a program's full. But like I said, most of those will be able to work in, but then if they get into that 15th year or something, and they may need some money, we've got avenues to be able to help them with that. And a lot of times, those students will qualify for Pell at that point. So you've got financial aid, you can tap in, just like you would at a college.
So for that 15th year and beyond, it just goes to, I mean, it grants aside or whatnot, but it goes to just your regular tuition for, for an out-of-district person?
Right, if they are out-of-district, yes.
Or, no, I'm saying, if we're in district, but this is a 23-year-old person that's wanting to now come back to your, and go through the nursing program or the, whatever program it might be, they, they pay the tuition based upon the fact that Hennessy's not even in the district? Is that okay?
If they, if they live, if they moved out from mom and dad, but they still live in that district anywhere, they're in district.
Our in-district rate is half of what out-of-district rate is.
Okay, okay. So that, that's a blind, you know, people beyond the 14th year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As long as they don't move too far away, they still will get that.
And that goes for full-time programs and our short-term courses for corporate training.
If you offer the 13th and 14th year for kids that may not be able to get in, but they still get the same free tuition that the ones in high school get, why would they not get the same, same opportunity to get the classes before the adults? If they tried during, in high school and weren't able to get in because of whatever reason, and you offered the 13th, 14th year, why do they not fall in the same category as the high school students? Why would they have such an issue of trying to get in?
I don't think they would have. I mean, they're, they're just out, so they're, they're ones that we're going to look at. If they, for whatever reason, couldn't, we're going to look at that group too, if they can get in.
Our counselors work directly with our partner school counselors. If there is a high school student that is just not quite where they need to be to talk about a plan of what, okay, your junior year, this isn't a good fit, you freshman and sophomore year, you had a couple Fs, you really need to get a few more credits. And they work with those counselors at the high school to help come up with a plan. Since I've been at Autry over the last 10 years, I've never seen a student over their entire five years of getting that tuition free of not getting into a program due to it being full. And as of right now, we're at about 86% capacity.
Yep.
So we do have availability now as well.
And that's the information I want to get to the public, and hopefully they'll watch all of the Hennessy feed for this, because that is a concern that has presented itself. And I don't know the answer to that. You all know the answer.
Yeah, I think that's a valid concern, but I think if you look, and I'm proud that we are at that 86%, but if you look at the whole process, when the high school student piece runs out, we go ahead and start filling with the adult to try to get to that 100% mark is what we're shooting at. But all these high school students we're talking about are on that first level priority. So they're going to get looked at first.
Do you offer common education classes as well? So if somebody's up there taking a specified program, but then they can, they can fulfill their math credits without having to drive back to Hennessy?
Yes. And I want to say some, some of those that maybe they're offered one time, and they, we might need it somewhere via math class, and they can't get to home high school.
Or is it in the school science math?
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, I'm talking specifically about, you know, Algebra II, and then or calculus, where they're, they're taking a program, but they can just stay there and go to a calculus class instead of driving all the way back here. I know that that's a little thing.
Yeah, and we do have the awesome group too. But I think what you're talking about is if a kid can't get, yeah, can't get math to home high school.
Can, but it's just, that's the only way.
Maybe they can come to us, is that they have that opportunity. So yes, it would be available.
So how many current districts do you work with, school districts?
We have 10 partner schools right now.
10 partner schools. What, what is your attendance from those 10 districts? Do you know what your population is?
Our high school population is about 50%. Our other, and I'm estimating.
Is that what you're, how many high schools compared to? You have an actual number of those students?
Students, did you say 750?
750.
750.
Full-time programs, yes. But that would count both. That would be high school and adult.
That's high school and adults. What, so on the high school end, how many kids?
Right at, right at the 50% mark.
We're three.
Okay, right, it's 50%. About half and half right now.
So 50, 11th and 12th, 50%.
13, 14. Well, 50% adult. So there could be that 13th or 14th, or there could be somebody that's been out of wants coming back as an adult.
So of all of those 10 districts, what is your highest attendance of those 10 districts? Meaning, if you look at each school, which school, not which school, not which school, what is, I don't want you to name a school, I don't want you to name a district, but what is your highest attendance from that school? Meaning, what is the student population? Is it, I can look at the average number. I mean, average, you're going to have 37 students from each district, but what is the actual number for your highs to your lows? Do you know?
It would be probably a guess, but you've got, you've got a 6A district compared to probably some A districts. So you've got a big, you've got a big difference.
We're varying from 600 a class to 22 a class.
Yeah, if that helps.
Well, it could send 90%, but.
And percentage wise, our smaller schools, we get a higher percentage usually on those.
What would you say the highest percentage, do you have any idea? Like what the highest percentage a district would send?
Probably 25 to 30, and of their juniors and seniors. And that would be a high end if you've got that many, but.
I've seen some of the smaller districts, and it varies, but I've seen some of the smaller districts have classes around 20, 22 to be about 80, 85, and on a, a special year.
So we have roughly 120 plus or minus each year of that.
And you said 120.
120, roughly 50 to 60 per class.
We run about 60.
60 a class.
Yeah, that's what I got, 120.
Of those enrolled in the past five or 10 years, do you have any rough numbers on completion of, you know, whatever, I guess, discipline they were in, completion of the program?
You bet. So we call that positive placement. And we would consider positive placement, entering the workforce, continuing to higher ed, or entering the military. We would count all three of those. And we are 83, 85% or higher. And we've been this high in the last five to six years, has 96% positively placed. So those are.
Is that high school, or is that your total population?
That's total population of full-time programs.
Do you have that broken down for your high school students?
I could get that number. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Yes.
I would want to know what that number would be for your high school population.
What about transportation to and pro for in district schools, someplace as far as Hennessy?
Right. We, we pay, we don't have transportation, but we pay the partner school to utilize their bus to bring them to us. So we pay models to bring them to Autry.
The reason I ask that question about the positive placement would be, there's a lot of motivation for an adult who's there to go on and get a job and so forth. Whereas there may be less motivation for a high school student. And I would want to know what that positive placement looks like for your high school population.
True.
You know, I don't care if people are sending 25% of their students. If only 1% of them are going on to be successful in the workforce, then that'd help a whole lot.
Good questions.
Does the addition of Hennessy to the district add many more efficiencies for you as far as more students, or would it pretty well be the same? I mean, I know, you know, we wouldn't be bringing a ton of students, you know, even on the high side, if we did 20%. We're looking at, you know, 20 kids.
Sure.
Not that many, but the dollars is going to be well over a million dollars. So what does that do for the school? Does it make it better? Does it not even make a difference? Does it allow more programs to fit more kids? What does that money do?
Makes it better in a couple ways. And I think what most of these questions have been looked at is that high school 20, 60, whatever number we're looking at. I think the biggest benefit that comes to Hennessy is that corporate training piece for all your business and industry to do a lot of things that they're having to pay for out of district. They're costing them a lot of money, but then they get those. And we do some of those things for industry. And, and we do some of those things for Hennessy businesses, but it costs them more than if they were in that district. So yeah, it's, it's a real positive for Autry. We just added three new programs.
Technically six. We have three brand-new ones and then we changed the curriculum in another one and then another one opened during COVID, so I didn't count that one. So technically we have six new programs since we met last, which added about a hundred and twenty vacancies. So our total vacancy is about eight hundred now.
Which, back to your point, I mean, there's just more opportunities for those students to get in.
So you have some Hennessy businesses that are currently paying out of district? Do you know how many?
No, no, I thought ahead. I know several attended our contractor conference that we had a couple months ago.
Yes.
And, and, and those businesses were excited that you guys were looking into that because it just, it helps them on the bottom line, so. And like I say, the numbers, if you look, and, and most of the time it gets on to where you're looking at. Or only, for the amount of money we're sending, we're only getting this number. Well, it's usually the big number here that isn't thought about that really helps out, so. You know, people in business that are coming back from retraining and those kind of places, opportunities are going through that.
So Mandy, how, how long have you been at Autry?
I'm in my nine year here.
In the nine years, what is the evolution of, you said you've added six programs. What's, you haven't always just added programs, things have been taken away too, right? I mean, and you, this is the third career tech that you've been at, you know, so obviously, what does that look like? How many programs get closed? Is, is it just simply because of technology advancing or lack of participation?
A little of both and I could tell you from where I sit, looking at numbers, I mean, that's something that I look at. And sometimes it may not be, which is sad, let's take plumbing. That's a program that I could place, every student that went through that program, they could get a job. The front end to fill it, you can have the program, but you might get one or two and you can't sustain that type of setup. For whatever reason, it's good money, but that's the tough, one of the tougher programs and we get hit all the time, once you guys have a problem with her. Well, we do it short-term and even there, it's hard to get people into it. So there's things like that, that I'm constantly looking at numbers. Do we have enough to justify keeping that? And then the question is, is there a demand for it and we're not doing a good job of filling it? Or is the demand switched out there that we, you know, is no longer needed? You know, the industries change, especially on the technology side. If you're not staying up with those kind of deals, that changes as fast as we can.
And without looking all the way through, you mentioned technology, what about IT? What management information systems, I mean, what, what, what do you offer on that end? Cybersecurity?
In our IT program, we actually have two teachers. They teach and there's actually multiple units. And so when those students go in, they get to pick their preference area. So we have added cybersecurity, you mentioned in last year's systems networking, but there's six different areas and they get to pick and choose their interest areas. You have the hardware side, you have the software side, and so they can go back and forth or they can focus on each one of those sides. So that, that program specifically has a wide variety of routes, so every single one of you sitting here could do a different path in that program.
Well, and then just about every program we have anymore has technology tied to it. Whether it's auto collision or, I mean, looking up paint codes and so. Technology now is what used to be a few select programs, now it's through the whole building.
Do you have any upper-middle-aged veterinarians that really need some information technology?
Always, always. I was just, I was glad I didn't bring my laptop, so I just felt comfortable even though it's the same issue. Just curious.
You receive any kind of state?
Hollinger, Hollinger in this case.
You receive any kind of state or federal aid?
Yeah, you mean foreign target funding?
Yes.
Yeah, and so do you guys know, we're about seventy percent locally funded. They usually say seventy, twenty-eight, two. That's usually pretty good. Sometimes it's fluctuate up and down, just like they were talking about federal funds, we get some of the federal funds. So our federal percentage is going to be higher because of several of the federal funds coming down because of COVID. Usually it's about a seventy percent locally funded, two percent, or twenty-eight percent state-funded, two percent federal. Type kind of breaks out.
You mentioned you had a relationship with OSSM?
Yes, and you described that relationship. We have two teachers on staff on site. Yeah, yeah, we're a satellite campus.
We're one of the last of the regional sites across the state. I believe there's four or five left and we're one of them.
Yes, so you have two teachers on site, what do they teach, wait, what, what do they do?
High-end physics and high-end math.
We actually have had fifty percent of our OSSM students score a perfect score on their AP Calc exam, which is just crazy to me to make a perfect score, so they're very high-performing math students. And they are through the Oklahoma School of Science and Math, so that credit shows up on their transcript from that. And that allows them to still participate in sports and be involved like a normal high school student and not have to go to that campus in Oklahoma City. While they're on our campus, we treat them a part of our students. They do the leadership programs with our students, they're ambassadors with our students. They're a part of the Autry family, just like our other twenty-five programs.
What is the cost for Hennessy's district to enter into?
We, we vote fifteen mill. Ten mill on our general and five on our building fund. That's right.
Is there any? Do you have any discretion on that?
A little, and I have to check to be sure. They used to let, like a new school wanting to vote in and have it graduated. I think what that's now is it has to go to the Autry Board for approval if they were willing to do something like that. So it might start the first year, it'd be fifty percent, like an eighty percent, then the third year up at a hundred percent. I don't know if that's still the way. They used to have that option. I don't know if that's still available. That would be the only discretion I would think we would have.
When was the last time that a new district has been voted in?
Mandy, you'll have to answer that one for me.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Since before I was there.
It's just been a while, sorry.
No, yeah, I assume it didn't.
Yep.
What's it take to get out? Does anybody ever leave?
Something I know of. And I think that's really telling, I'm being smart, like, and I don't mean to be, but I think once they're in, the benefits that they receive, not only for their high school students, but their business and industry district, they don't want to get out. And there is a process.
Describe the benefits to the local industries to me again.
Any kind of safety training, any kind of, any kind of leadership training or any kind of update training that their staff, employees might need. We can bring that in if it's a specialty.
You bring it into the business?
Yes, it can be in the business, they can come to us, so whatever works best for them. The, your firemen, anybody that knows has access to all that kind of training that we do. So it just opens the door to any business that if they're having, we have funds available to help with training. Maybe it's something very specialty and maybe it's their high-end training that they'd love to have, just can't afford to do it. Then we've got some funds we can tap in through the state to help with something like that. So there's a lot of opportunities to look at those kind of deals. If somebody's expanding in the district, we have what we call TIPS contract. Because there's that expansion part, there's some paperwork through the state that we can help them if they're going to add employees and add more money or grow their business, there's opportunities to tap into those dollars too, so.
You said that if we were in district, that it would be a discount, reduce the cost of businesses and stuff, being able to do take part in those programs. How much of a discount?
Half.
Half?
Yeah, because you got, when we consider, I, I look at it three levels. There's like an out-of-state level, which is like if you were going to open market and have a consultant come in, which is pretty high. Half of that is an out-of-district piece where you guys involved, and then half of that again is an in-district piece. It's about double-half of, well, not double-half, but two-thirds off of like a consultant fee into what an in-district person pays. If you're looking to be over market on a business industry training.
Do you guys do any like community involvement in the districts that you're involved with as far as like going out just to do and stuff? Like, I don't even know, but something that's.
What, a dog wash or what?
Something like that, yeah.
I've never been to a dog wash. I've been to a lot of community events and a lot of our staff does that as well. And tomorrow night I'm going to a family night at one of our partner schools. And I've done different presentations from pre-K programs all the way up to, we've been out to the nursing homes and done some different activities with them. So it really just varies and it also depends on our business and industry partners as well, so as far as the community goes. And when I say business and industry, that includes nonprofits as well. We're very involved with many nonprofits and all of our communities that are part of our district.
What are the benefits of our district belonging to Autry Tech for a thirty-year-old or a forty-year-old? Are there any?
What would you like to have trained in? What, what would you?
I guess what I'm saying is there a reduction in, in the cost of their training? You see what I'm saying? I should, maybe I'll be more specific. The cost of the tuition or what have you.
If they're over sixty-five, yes. In that middle group, no. I mean, you get the in-district discount, but you don't get.
But they still get an in-district discount?
Yeah.
Always.
Always.
What's your in-district?
Which is half.
Yeah.
No matter what their age?
No, yeah, you're, you're at that end. And then that's the way we look at it. Where do they, where do they live? If they're in our boundaries of that district, then they're an in-district person, they get that across the world, whatever they want to say. Yep. Yes, sir.
What's offered at your satellite campuses? I'm just looking at the brochure, I see Woodring Straight Accelerator.
Woodring sits at the airport, which is right out between Tyson and Coke. So there's a lot of safety training, a lot of any kind of certification training that they might need, but it's worth it. Whatever they need, it's really location for them so that their folks don't have to travel as far to get to the site.
Serves those, those businesses out there specifically or the airports?
That's the main ones. It could serve anything we wanted to, but it's mainly safety training out there at the, at the airport.
Well, I saw Woodring and I was thinking, do you offer a?
Aircraft mechanic?
Aircraft mechanic?
Yes, it's actually not there yet, but it's at the accelerator campus, but we do offer that. And, and just, we just got a donation from Vance on some flight simulators that we're going to bring in to actually enhance that program. So yeah, that's at the accelerator campus. We just signed the contract to start doing poly fusion. There's a certification to do all on poly pipe and so we're going to look at doing that certification. That would be at the accelerator campus.
And what, what is the straight?
Straight Center is a business incubator. I'm glad you brought that up. That's one thing I hadn't touched on yet. There's a document in there. So if somebody wanted to start a business and they're in our district, they have access to that straight center to get them help with maybe a business plan, have a spot to start it, have access to experts to help them if it's on financials, whatever their expertise might not be. We can help kind of grow that business to the point that hopefully then they roll out, just like a chicken incubator. Once they're, they'd be on their own, then they roll out and start a business. And that could be from Hennessy that it come to us and maybe started, but to come back to Hennessy taxiing to grow that business down the road.
There is a book in your folder that talks about entrepreneur services, because there's a wide variety of services for entrepreneurs.
So do you treat your, your corporate business relationships differently than you do the school relationships? Are they segregated or is it all pretty much?
I don't know if I follow exactly. There's two different groups. We've got what I call two sides of the hall. We've got our full-time programs that deal with high school students. And then we've got corporate training that deals with the business and industry side. So there are two separate staffs, but yes, one Autry, so.
So they are separate staff?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, it's all Autry staff, but yeah, their focus is on whether it's on the corporate training side or the, the full-time program side. Good questions, guys.
So if we were to, uh, want to advance the opportunity of joining Career Tech, what are the steps for, for Hennessy schools to do?
If you guys want to move forward, there's actually a team from the Career Tech State Department comes in and walks us through the whole process if that's something you guys want to move forward.
Is it a timely thing that it needs to be done at a certain time?
I don't know if I quite follow.
Okay, to join Autry Tech or Chisholm Trail next September, next fall?
Next for the fall. Yeah, there'd be some timelines. We'd back from that date up that we'd need to meet because it'd have to come to our board, get approval and vice versa. So there's a process that we can go through to get that one.
Justin Lockwood with Career Tech System, they said we'd come up next if this is something we want to pursue. So it doesn't, including today, that's what I say.
And through then would they bring in community town hall meetings to bring the information?
They would be there to answer questions, just like Mr. Hughes has been. He would answer, not really for Autry or Chisholm Trail, but for the Career Tech.
Right, for the system itself.
For the system itself, you know, the straight.
Unfortunately, you showed up on the night that we got our annual.
I know, that's not good timing. At least you passed.
Yeah, so did you pass?
Yes.
Did we get a copy of that?
No exception.
Do you use angel advice?
But I, but I'm telling you.
Can we get your report?
Sure, yeah, it's an open record. But I will tell you, it hadn't, it wasn't mine, so if you're judging me off of that.
Blaming on the predecessor, nobody ever does that.
It was a good audit, I can tell you that, so. Yeah. What else, guys? Those are good questions.
Hold on here, okay.
I, I.
I would like to know your numbers on your positive placement on the high school.
Just get them to Jason.
I'll get them with them and I'll send it out.
That timeline, you know, for next year, like what's that?
That's another email I can send out to you from, from Mr. Lockwood. And that's really our discretion, kind of with how we want to proceed. That's really up to us.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Well, I appreciate the visit.
Don't worry about sitting through the rest of our meeting.
And, and I would offer, you know, sometimes if you lay eyes on it, you guys are welcome to come up. Mandy or myself, Jesse, whoever you feel comfortable with, we'd love to have you on campus and come just look at it. And, but like I said, appreciate you guys, just considering it, I think is great, so thank you. If we didn't answer something, if you think of something later, give it to Jason, he can shoot me an email and we'll, but.
A lot of the information that James was talking about, I think it would be interesting to know the, the adult student population versus the high school population versus, you know, your corporate training stuff, I mean, how are those numbers?
So our most recent numbers for right now, and this new interim report will come out, is that very first page of our publication. So that'll give you a starting point, but I will definitely give you some more.
Is that in the connect?
Yes, that's in that publication.
Is there a cafeteria, I mean, do they have like cafeteria up there?
That's one of the new programs. We had a cafeteria, they closed it, completely remodeled it. And it's now what we call Cafe Blue. And so just now, I mean, we're still in kind of infant stages of getting that open, but yes, to answer questions would have. So culinary arts.
Do board members from in-district get free or?
No. And we charge those the double, but you guys can eat free, but. No, we, it is actually something we recoup cost on, so we, we do have where they charge and then we've got a little bistro too that you can get. We're going to have where you can get a quick sandwich or salad or something on the bill. Yeah, if you're up that way sometime, we're going to try to open that. Our point is next, or I guess this coming January, the public. So we're still kind of soft opening it right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the time.
If you guys have any questions that come up later tonight, tomorrow, just shoot me an email that way we can start a comparison of the two Career Tech systems and get the right answer, the right information to have a, have a good if we decide to move forward and want to have town hall meetings. First of all, to decide which one and then if we will move forward or whatever, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks. You guys have a great evening.
Appreciate it.
Item four point two, discussion, possible board action regarding COVID relief construction application for the elementary outdoor classroom.
So we showed you the, the drawing, we talked about the curriculum, you know, I think everything that we've got going on at the elementary, the early childhood, what we're calling outdoor. uh, what we're calling outdoor classroom. So Timbly's filling out the S3 application and we have to budget this. And that got kicked back and they, so she talked to her, we have to fill out. They want a construction application for it. And I think probably the holdup may be the turf. And so it has to be board approved for a construction application. Then we'll send it into the state. If the state approves it, then we'll put it into the S3 application. The budget right now is just under a hundred and fifty thousand with the turf. If we, and the, the turf is not also just aesthetically. That has a four-foot fall, a safety rating on that. So that's why we're trying to also incorporate that, 'cause some of those, you know, the walking beams, you're gonna need mulch or you're gonna need a, a fall, a safety catch anyway.
So everything in green is gonna be this turf?
Correct. Correct. So if the whole application gets denied, we'll probably go back and just see what parts need to be taken out, what they're not comfortable with. And if it is the turf, we would just remove the turf and put everything else in. And then later on, maybe look at just doing turf out of local money. But that's, that's the reason we need to. We don't have, so Friday, you know, we posted agenda Thursday. Friday is when we got notice that the application had been denied. So had to add that to the agenda and we just haven't had time to present to you the final draft. It's in rough draft. Doesn't have to be, it has to be board approved so you know, I mean, I think everybody clear on what we're getting with that.
So why was it denied?
Because they consider that a construction. We don't know. I, I'm assuming it's the turf part of it. I think when they see turf, they're kind of relating it to, uh, or they, you know, sports, they're relating it to something sport related. And so showing them that area, uh, you know, showing them the safety rating on the fall and trying to get some of that in there and incorporate. We'll see if that works. So it just has to be board approved. Like I said, the budget for that, uh, from Sinlon who worked with from day one was just under a hundred and forty thousand. So I think it's one thirty-seven to change. So.
For the turf, though?
No, for, for stage, but anything. And a lot of the stuff has come in, you know? But like the stage, you know, that would be a construction item. So maybe that's, that's what the holdup is. I don't, they didn't really clarify what the holdup was. So to move forward with that and get everything that we hope to get, then I would ask the board to approve, uh, that construction application.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Dr. Matusi?
Yes.
Mr. Laugh?
Hi.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Dunham?
Yes.
Agenda item 4.3, discussion, possible board action to award contract for the repair replacement of the existing track.
Okay, so there, I, there was a couple of questions last time when we finished up that I needed to go back. And it's, it's really tough to make a true apples-to-apples comparisons on the installation of tracks because all track, the way they do them is just a little bit different. But on your comparison sheet, I tried to get the things that you could see that would be the most comparable, you know, life expectancy, life, uh, before replacement, you know, everything like that. You have, you know, two great companies. All four of the tracks that are listed on that sample sheet are great tracks. The 300-layer tracks, you know, you could see they have, one company has a little bit more rubber than the other. They're both of what they call thirteen millimeter with the base mat and the sandwich top. Okay? These are not like low end of the comparison of the two. These are the lower end, but they're still very good. They have, both of them have 200 systems, 100 systems, which are even, even less. So I've listed some schools there, uh, that have these. Uh, you can see the life, you know, before replacement. Then obviously the, the 3,000 of Hellus and then the 1,000, uh, made just a little different. The one from Hellus is ten millimeters. They put out the polyurethane, then hand cast everything, put out the polyurethane, hand cast everything. Here they put out the surface mat and the, the wear mat is on top. It's a little thicker. Both of these are very quality tracks. You can tell by their warranty, by their life expectancy. Uh, fewer schools have these just because of the cost. Uh, but, you know, if you look at over the course of 30 years, you don't make sense. Of course, like I told Mr. Tillman, the question is, are you doing business over the years? 'Cause a warranty only gives as long as a certain business. So, um, you know, it's really, it's really up to us. Any, any one of these four is gonna be a very quality track. Uh, that's what we, what we get.
What was the name of the vendor that was here?
Baneen.
Baneen, okay.
Baneen, yeah. And that's the name of the company.
Okay.
That was Dennis.
This is the one I liked.
That was Dennis Rayden that was here.
That one, right.
The BSS 1,000.
Yep. Is that the, what, what?
That's the bank, the one, the guy that was here.
That's, that's his top quality track.
That's his top quality track.
Uh, these were the lesser of the two, two different companies. This one goes with that.
You know, when, when you're talking apples-to-apples, that's where, you know, the percentages of polyurethane are just a little different for one or the other.
I like the, the way that was, uh, produced. That was higher.
Yeah.
It's thicker, plus you can, I mean, it looks like it's got 10 more years of warranty on it. Or, excuse me, 10 more years of life expectancy.
Well, fortunately, we're in, we're in a good position, uh, you know, being able to, to be able to afford this is, is the main thing. And to, to get this behind us and to move forward, I think is.
Do we have any estimates on the other cost associated with getting our program together over there?
No.
Station parking, anything like that?
No, I'm still, that, we can talk about that a little later. Still waiting on some of that stuff. Yes, sir.
For an expenditure like this that, uh, is, is quite an outlay now, depending upon the, how long it lasts, uh, is the difference between going with the 300 or going with the 1,000? Um, because then you're gonna accrue not all that expense, but considerable amount to rip it out in 10 years or 15 years or 30 years. But the other consideration in the expenditure like this for a school is usage. You know, nine hundred thousand dollars. How much are we gonna use this? Can we, are there enough, uh, Tuesdays or Fridays in the track and field season for, uh, Hennessy to be able to host a fifth and sixth grade, a seventh and eighth grade, a high school meet, uh, potential of a regional, uh, or a, a, a qualifying, um, track meet? And, and that's just to, to ask the public, or, well, I mean, the public is actually paying for this, not, not be a bond, but, uh, through our funds. Uh, we need to see, you know, uh, we justify that with income to the community by buses pulling up and parents coming and spending money in our community, uh, and at our schools and, and gate fees as well as, uh, entry fees to this. So I would go back to the question. Are there enough, are there any openings in the, uh, middle school and high school track and field, uh, um, calendars for us to ever host anything?
I would think so.
I would think so. I've been here since, you know, May. You've been here 20 years. Um, you, we're gonna try to get as, host as many as we can. Obviously you can't host one every week, but that, that's the intent. I mean, that's everything that I've heard from community is being able to get on it, use it, practice, community use it. So like I said, I, I.
I think it's.
I don't know the full answer to that. I wish, I wish I did. I hope that, I mean.
I would say.
Not trying to avoid it, Mr. Griffin.
I would tell you that, yeah, you can host, um, you probably host a, say, a middle school, which would incorporate your fifth and sixth grade and seventh, eighth grade track in a high school, but expect it to be short-term, to turn out like O'Keane, someone like O'Keane's been doing it for several years. I talked to Mark Cox when I was talking to you guys about the track. I think the summer before Dr. Woods was gonna retire and he said that that year, uh, when they had their meets, the two meets, both of them just in, I think, entry fees and gate fees had cleared like five thousand apiece for the meet. And that's not including your concession and.
Well, we'll never, we'll never pay for it with track. It's, we'll never pay for it. But it's a matter of having a track program or not having a track program. Because the way it is now, it's unsafe. You don't, either you have it or you don't have it because it's unsafe the way it is. So either you do it or you don't. What's your experience? I mean, have you ever installed a track?
We resurfaced one. I resurfaced one.
Have you dealt with either of these vendors?
But I, I mean, everybody, they, everybody is, they're very high on. O'Keane just used Hellus on one. Um, Baneen is down the cashing. So, I mean, they're, they're, yeah, they're, they're, they're both quality.
Would you have a preference?
Do I? No, I don't. Whatever you guys are coming.
The way, the way I look, I mean, just looking at it, uh, looking at the money, you don't save enough money on Baneen's lesser quality track to justify it.
Because of replacing it in such a short time.
Yeah, I mean, that's eighty thousand dollars. Well, hell, we throw eighty thousand dollars around like it's nothing in a normal week. So when you're looking at that, and I look at an 11-year, uh, life expectancy before resurfacing versus 15, plus your expectancy before replacement, another eight years. Yeah, it makes a lot more sense to me. Makes more sense to me to have the higher quality track, reducing injuries and so forth on the track.
Did they tell us what, if they were gonna resurface a track, I mean, what that cost is? I mean.
The resurface after that, that first one is gonna be in the 200, 250 thousand range, depending on, yeah, cost at that time.
Right now, I think ours is a seven-lane track, right? Seven lane?
I think it's eight.
I think we got a seven.
Okay.
What we run into as far as trying to host a regional, which is a seven-lane track?
Good question.
And not an eight-lane track. Cause at eight lane, then they're gonna have to, if we wanted to host a regional and they want an eight-lane track, then we're gonna have to pop the curbing and all that.
Will you run over there real quick and check on that? I don't want to delay another meeting just to have a difference on one lane.
You want resale or go potty break?
No, we can just go down.
Well, let's just keep going down. We'll come back to it. We'll come back to it.
You have a picture of it?
I, I might.
Josh will be mad whenever.
Well, um.
Let's go to superintendent.
Well, is there any, did you have any other question?
Well, I, just doing simple math, as James is saying, the, the most expensive track, and, and I'm just going to the maximum bid, uh, so roughly nine hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and nineteen thousand. But it says a 30-year, uh, life expectancy before replacement. That comes out to thirty thousand dollars a year. You go down from there, that next one, the Hellus 3,000, uh, if it's a 20-year track at nine seventeen, that's forty-five thousand dollars a year before it has to be replaced. Thirty-eight thousand for the next, and then that cheapest one that only lasts for 15 years is fifty-six thousand dollars a year until it has to be replaced. So just.
It just makes.
Putting the math of what you say, yes, it's more expensive on the outlay, but if it's gonna be 25 to 35 years before complete replacement.
If we were talking three hundred thousand dollars, that'd be a different story.
Right, yeah, I mean.
We're talking eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, from, from the very low end of these four.
And I do remember him talking about injuries with this higher quality track that have been reduced. And there's a huge difference that.
I would like to know what, I, I really like that you put the schools that, uh, they have installed it. I was just on the Luther High School track on Friday night and it seems brand new. I'd, I'd love to know.
Which one that is?
I, yeah, I, I was.
How many?
There's one of those eight, but you're only gonna use seven kind of thing, you know, sometimes.
Is one for the dog or the rabbit or whatever they touch?
Wrong kind of track.
And I just picked, on those reference lists, I just picked, um.
High jump, high jump, pole, pole.
It, it is eight lane.
So we have to worry about keeping bicycle. I mean, we talked about public use.
That would be, that would be that perimeter fencing and signage, you know, making sure anything with wheels, you go to the football field, walk around with asphalt.
That would be the track I ran on.
I don't.
Yeah, I typically ran on.
I don't see anything on Baneen or Hellus or Luther, Luther reference.
It seems like.
And I did not include all their, all four of the schools. I just picked some that, you know, local or you might know.
Well, when I was standing on it, I was going, this feels like the most expensive one, you know?
I know the principal real well. I can ask you. I don't know well enough. I forgot his phone number. It is eight lane if we wanted to stay on the track issue.
Yeah. Did he get, did you get the call?
Hey, go tell him to check out. I'm interested. How, how are the high jumps?
Tell him the E C, see him at the E C.
Hey, we need to know how many steps around.
What's the grit of the sand in the long jump?
What other discussion would you like to?
I, well, I mean, if, uh, this is discussion, possible board action, so at nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's just for the tear-out rebuilds that we have at track. We have, we have stands. We, we have the additional consideration of to host, you know, where are we gonna put, where are we gonna park them? Where, where are they gonna go potty? Um, all those considerations that, you know, would, would go above and beyond this. Can we afford nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, looking at the, at the budget?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Is this a building fund then?
Internal fund.
Of the demo?
It's a repair and replace.
Okay.
It's a repair and replace.
I saw in our conferences that we're paying for some dirt work over there at ditch by the MFA that's all underway and they're getting that. Which kind of feeds into the track area too.
And I agree with what James said. I mean, right now we've got.
You've got nothing.
A wasted piece of acreage.
And, I mean, I'd like to say that the track and field is an important program that needs to be maintained. The program needs to be maintained and there's only one way to do it and that's to have a facility for it. We would have, we would have built this track before now if it had been given to us eight years ago.
Yeah, I was on.
Approximately.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner, for.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
He texted me, he said it was eight lane and I thought he knew the whole time. I was like, why didn't he say that?
Well, and it's funny that you mentioned that because as you were walking out, he said that. He goes, oh, it's eight lane.
Did you really drive over there?
I did. No, I was, I was about to call Mr. Sternberger because I had just got back in the car. I was there. Just put that down on your mileage.
So we, right. So the way I look at it is we would have been faced with this hurdle had the property and facility not been generously donated prior to. The unfortunate part is we're stuck here now replacing the track. It was generously donated to the school, but a hurdle that would have had to have been undertaken eventually. Because what we had around, what we had around the football track was not going to suffice. We would have been replacing that.
But I did ask about why not just re, why not tear up that track and go back with?
It's not 400 meters.
Well, we'd have to move some stands.
Well, the other thing too is that, two things. That would not be considered a repair and place because we're taking everything inside the curve. So now all of a sudden we have to pay for it out of building fund. We don't have the money in building fund. That's one. Also, that field, that tracking field was designed for field events except discus to take place inside the, we, so only contestants are in there. That's the reason those stands were brought in that way. Besides discus, somebody can sit in those bleachers all day and not be kneeling around the track. So that's the two main reasons. And the amount of dirt work and everything you'd have to do at the football field, because you have to go south, I think, 50 feet. I think you'd have to come east, you know, fill in that ditch.
Yeah, cause that was considered when that was built and, and what it would take, uh, you have the, honestly, the, uh, yeah, the visitors bleachers, maybe even the weight room is gonna have to be removed, um, because, you know, you, you could make it really sharp curves to make it 400.
No, I would just, my, my question about it was, you know, and I brought it up a minute ago, is nine hundred thousand dollars for the track, I get that. But bathrooms, concession, parking, all those things that support that track are not over there.
Well, they are. They're just a little further away. People are gonna have to walk a little further. We'll have handicap parking up there. And if we have to, just like for cross-country meets, whatever, for a year or two, we can bring in porta potties.
Right.
Those, they can walk. It's not ideal, but luckily most people attend track meets kind of are fitness-minded anyway, so it won't hurt them to walk a little extra.
Now, I go to a water track.
Like I said, I'm a fitness-minded. I didn't say fit. I didn't say fit, but fitness-minded.
Track meets at large, can we have? Track meets at large, can we have parking as close to the track as possible?
There you go.
It's a whole lot more trouble to watch track from, you know, your own car with the heater going.
And I think that would be, you know, my comment would be that we don't have the facilities to support that, but we have the land to support it.
Yes.
And with baby steps, we can build.
Yes.
We can build that. We've got things that will suffice at this time to have a track meet, you know? Just not completely ideal, but we can still do it. You know, and the other thing is, is I think that we have done everything possible to make our students safe. So we've got safe rooms for them. We've redone entrances, bulletproof glass, so forth and so on, to make our students safe. I don't think that, I sure certainly hope that we are not lacking anything in any classroom.
I have not said no to anything, principals. I'm not aware of anything that is. I would not feel comfortable recommending this if we were not providing in the classroom first.
I'll make a motion to approve the Vaynen top quality track. I wish I had the SS one thousand because my damn computer just quit.
Don't put that in the motion, Timberly.
It's not touchscreen.
Todd, help us on that.
What is that IT class that I'll train?
They can't help, they can't help this. Motion on, motion on the floor.
Second.
Call the vote, Chris.
Which, which one did he take?
The B, the Vaynen one thousand.
One thousand.
BSS one thousand.
BSS one thousand, yes.
There was some BS in it too.
Dr. Matuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Laub.
Hi.
Mr. Chik.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes. Item five, new business.
No new business, that's all.
Number six.
Okay, I gave you a volunteer consent form for the COVID testing. What this is, is the state and more of the CARES money related to the COVID. Project seven twenty-three is a grant that we can apply, we have applied for and have been awarded up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It allows us to go back in, code some custodial salaries, allows us nursing, so frees up up to, I don't know that we'll spend it all this year. You know, obviously PPEs or other, anything to help air quality, cleaning supplies, almost all that falls in line with this, thus freeing up money in general fund. So that's kind of one of the ways that you could look at possibly, if the turf gets denied, we could say, well, we got this. Now, some of the, the main reason that this grant is out there is early, early identification of COVID. And so what they're encouraging people to do is they want you to volunteer tests and within your school system, up to ten percent of the population each month. You have to make a valid attempt. You don't pull people in and force them and strong arm them. You know, it's, it's completely voluntary. Parent the kids under eighteen, parent guardian have to sign off on this. They have to request it. We don't call and encourage it. It's just simply an early identification and by following those rules and guidelines with it, then that gets you up to the hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Did you say, is this students and staff?
It is, yes. Has nothing to do with shots. We're not going to get into the vaccine part of it. This is just testing, which Nurse Shelley last year tested staff, not students, but tested staff last year. So this does allow for students whose parents sign a form, contact us. So we put that on our website, make an announcement, get it out there, you know, have it on.
So as long as we meet the testing requirement or population?
As long as we make the attempt to meet the testing.
Do we think we'll get a hundred tests a month?
Uh, no.
But we.
Isn't that the ten percent?
That'd be roughly, that'd be the ten percent.
Now, is this healthy people coming in and just being tested? But it could also apply to, I have a sniffle.
You guys, that's right, and.
I have a principal who can't shake a cough.
And we all know the thoughts, you know, there's some people that, you know, are not going to get tested for anything. There's others that get tested immediately and it's, it's their choice. And we're not encouraging or discouraging either way. It's just something that Nurse Shelley, she's CLIA certified through the health department to be able to do this. And so she, it's something that she can't, and you guys, board members, extension of the school can come in if you have sniffles or just think you were exposed to somebody and want to try it. If you're not sure, you can do it three days in a row. Same opportunities afforded to any personnel or any students we have. Like I said, the, the main thing is, is this is voluntary. It's the.
But it's not a, it's not a community thing.
It's not a community thing, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we can't open it up for.
Now, I think in there, Tim, let me help you out. I think there is, if it is positive, his direct family can come in, his household, his or her household. I think they can come in if they so choose. But, so.
So as long as the information is given out and people are aware of the testing procedure, we meet those requirements.
We meet those requirements and that's it. And like I said, another thing, that voluntary is another one thing. We're not going to get into the shot, the shot business.
Is this COVID money?
So.
Is this COVID money? A hundred and fifty thousand? Or is that, okay, thank you.
No, no action required.
No action required. And then grounds and maintenance. So as you saw in the encumbrances that Mr. Laub was asking about, so we're ordering the rock directly from DeLeese. They refuse, so we haul the rock down and then he's doing the dirt work and spreading that out to cover that ditch and get rid of the dirt. Some of that is pretty, it's not very good. There's a lot of concrete and stuff in it. So some of that he'll just haul off for us, other people that may meet field, wherever.
This is that towards the Ag Building?
Yes, I'm sorry, directly west of Ag Building, right there, south along the road.
What size?
I think the park lot extends a hundred feet.
What size? Is he putting water drains?
Twenty-four foot pipe in there and that's what he's waiting on right now. Twenty-four inch pipe.
Twenty-four foot? I know, I know where the kids are going.
Twenty-four inch pipe. Yeah, twenty-four inch pipe. And then, then the ditch here, just on the east side of the campus, on the west side of Mitchell. So the city is going to clean that out over Thanksgiving when no cars are around, so they'll do that.
Has he studied that some to know what size is pipe to put in there?
He worked with, uh, Mr. Brugman.
Okay, yeah, that, so they've done, they've done the necessary study. They've done the study to know what size.
And then working on Brugman with also hopefully to get a estimate on what that would cost for us to put pipe in there and cover that up.
Okay, so this is just cleaning it out?
This is just cleaning it out. So then working with Brugman to get a quote to cover it up, put dirt on it and then a separate quote for, for concrete, parking. One, put it to grass until we have funds or, you know, once we see what the estimate would be on that. And then that goes with the other projects. Architect came out. We talked about all the different projects, you know, the current bus barn turning into concessions that would be closer, locker rooms, whatever. So literally just playing the waiting game on estimates on that where I can get to you and we can kind of look at a prioritized needs list. Any questions on grounds or?
I got one on the football field. Is there anything that we can do to try and, I mean, hire a spraying service to come in and spray that? To try and get rid of some of those, the weeds and stuff that are in that, I mean, the football field needs some more towards the, sort of the grass.
I'll look at it.
Getting cleaned up.
Item.
And, and one more.
Good.
Well, I also, not, not to harbor a devil when we're talking about weeds, I notice there's some big ones kind of getting up over here in our parking lot across the street. More on the far west side. I was wondering about, you know, if someone could squirt them or chop them or something. Try to keep it.
Item seven point one, discussion possible board action regarding training stipends for staff.
So I changed that a little bit of what was originally sent out. You know, earlier this year, we just did a thousand dollars. So when Timberly typed that, that's, we just did that to be consistent. But, you know, money on our general fund, our gross production's good. We got that as our funds sitting there. So, you know, last year we gave out two stipends, a total of a thousand dollars. So.
Well, two stipends, one thousand each?
Fifteen hundred each, three thousand. Two stipends totaling three thousand.
One beginning, one Christmas?
One about the, yeah, one now given before Thanksgiving.
Same as.
Same year. And this year we eased off and went to a thousand to see what revenue was. Revenue is good. So that's why I added that to that. If you wanted to go one thousand and five hundred, if you wanted to go fifteen hundred and seven fifty, or if you wanted to go two thousand and the one thousand. And it's the explanation right there. So we, we're, we're in financial shape to do any of those.
Because last year we did.
Did three thousand total.
Yeah. And we're in position to do that.
So if you did a two thousand, one thousand, that would put us back where we're right now.
Where we did it last year.
Yes. And we're, we're more than comfortable to be in that position.
Go ahead.
I would move that we do the full two thousand dollars and one of the certified and a thousand for the support.
Okay, second.
Dr. Matuzzi.
Yeah.
Mr. Laub.
Hi.
Mr. Chik.
See.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Tillman.
Yes.
You guys want to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Dr. Matuzzi.
Yes.
Mr. Laub.
Hi.
Mr. Chik.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin. Mr. Tillman.
Yes.